If I could call the meeting to order, if we could all please rise for our pledge allegiance, all rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could all remain standing just for about 20 seconds here in memory of all the victims of the 9/11 attacks. Thank you very much. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Khan?
Here.
Trustee Minks?
Here.
Trustee Phil?
Here.
Trustee Travis?
Here.
Trustee Whitco?
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of our minutes of our regular meeting of August 9th, 2021?
I'll make the motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 9th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Minks, seconded by Trustee Whitco. Any discussion, questions, clarification? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I need an approval of our minutes of a special meeting, August 25th, 2021.
I'll make the motion to approve the special meeting minutes of August 25th, 2021.
I need a second, guys.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Trustee Greer, I'll go with on that one. Motion made by Trustee Minks, seconded by Trustee Greer. Any discussions, questions, clarifications? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. One abstain, one abstention. Special reports, this is why I think the crowd's here, because generally people don't come otherwise. We want them to, they just don't. Bill Payne, once in a while, he shows up, that's about it. Outstanding neighbor recognition of Arthur Bob General presented by our Community Relations Commissioner Anissa Laliwala. There she is, Anissa.
Thank you, Mayor.
You are welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I am Anissa Laliwala. I'm a commissioner on Morton Grove, or Community Relations Commission. Our commission focus is on doing activities to foster and improve neighbors' interactions, positive interactions, to build a better neighborhood. Some of the programs we do are the Adopt a Planter, Community Art Program, and our latest program is Recognize Outstanding Neighbor. So, in that program, residents have an opportunity to nominate their outstanding neighbor, and we recognize one of the neighbor in each of these board meetings. So today, I'm pleased to announce one of the, to recognize Arthur Bob General for that award. So, Bob received nomination from two neighbors, and before I go into detail about what each of the nominators are saying, I would like to invite Bob, his family, and also the nominators to the podium here, please. Please join me. Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you.
So Bob has been nominated by Joyce and Jim Mills, as well as Peg DiSario. So Joyce and, some of the things with Joyce and Jim mentioned, I will read out.
Houston Mike? Yeah.
Thank you. So, just recap real quick. So Bob has been nominated by two nominators, Joyce and Jim Mills, as well as Peg DiSario. Joyce and, here are some of the good things Joyce and Jim are saying about Bob. Bob is always the first person to recognize any new neighbors on the block. He's very helping. He shovels the snow, and he also brings a lot of Christmas spirit to the block. He does a lot of Christmas decoration. He helps neighbors with doing, putting up and taking out a lot of Christmas decoration as well. He has, one time, he has also helped to take out overgrown hedges and plant something new for one of the neighbors, and he likes to do different decorations. Also, I heard he's very famous for his Halloween decoration. So, a lot of good thing. He brings a lot of fun, activity, a lot of help to all the neighbors, so, and they say he has never said no to any request of assistance, so, great words. And also, Peg has some other good things to say about Bob. He likes to, you know, bring vegetables to his neighbors without even telling them, and he, you know, he anticipates neighbors' needs and reach out for help. He's always there. He one time helped fix somebody's lawnmower, Peg's lawnmower, and yeah, a lot of same thing about the Christmas spirit, and then, thank you, thank you, Bob, for being such a wonderful neighbor. And I understand our mayor liked to present a few small tokens of appreciation.
Congratulations. I guess we can't shake hands either?
No.
Illinois is not really the greatest place to live. First of all, thank you for nominating your neighbor. This is, to me, one of the best things we do at our village board meetings, because it really epitomizes what Morton Grove really and truly is. Not only are we a diverse community, but it still has that small-town feel, and this is what makes it a small-town feel. As I say in our presentation, this is just a Morton Grove pen, you know, use it as you'd like. I put a lot more emphasis on this pen, because we don't just give these away willy-nilly. These pens are normally given to people of service that have served the village, and what a better way to serve your village than to serve your neighbor. So this is a pen that you can wear, a lapel pin, or put it on a dresser or whatever, but we would like you to have this on behalf of the village board. We also have a $25 gift card for Morton Grove Restaurants, so you could pop it there. It's like being on a game show, isn't it, Bob? And there's more! Yeah. This is signed by me, which means it's worthless, but, but it's a nice thing to have, it's a conversation piece, and says, "Outstanding Neighbor Award is presented to Arthur Bob General in recognition of being a valuable neighbor in Morton Grove, September 13th, 2021, signed by Dandy Maria, Village President." So, thank you very much, and if you'd like to say anything, you can. If anybody else, neighbors and friends want to come down and get a photo op with Bob, Tom's gonna take some pictures, but it's kind of a tradition that we do, so. Anissa, nice. Come on for a picture. Bring a good picture, come on.
With everybody, all the neighbors.
Come on, neighbors, crowd, let's go. Let's go. Yeah. Center, Bob. Well, get towards your neighbors and friends. Oh, yeah. Even in front of the podium.
Yeah, maybe everybody in front. Everybody in front of the podium is a big group.
Yeah, we'll get a panoramic view.
Do you want me to stand in front of you, or what?
I want you to watch.
Dan, wait for Connie. Connie's coming.
Yeah, they've heard, which one is that?
You weren't talking to me, I don't think. You guys got it. You gotta bring, get a little closer.
We're all smiling.
And then, everybody take your mask off, and we'll send it to the prince.
All right, ready, one, two, three. Okay, one more for Charles. Everybody smile, I can't see. Two, three.
Yay!
Beautiful, Bob. No, it's tradition that, hey, you should know by your distance, you do my lawn.
Pick up my tarp.
He looks exactly the same, Bob. Seventy-four years later.
Bob, excuse me, Bob.
It's a tradition for you. I'll get to it.
There's a party afterward, right?
What time was that at your house, you said? I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you the opportunity to leave, if you'd like to leave right now, but if not, you're gonna have to stay for the whole meeting. No, I'm kidding.
So just last few comments. Thank you, Mayor. Again, congratulations to Bob, and thank you for all the nominators. Just want to say that if anybody would like to join our commission, you are welcome, more the merrier. Our commission meets once a month, on the second Tuesday, at 6:30 at the Village Hall. And tomorrow is our next meeting. If you're looking for more information, check out the website, or just ask me or any of the commissioners. Thank you, everyone.
Great job, thank you. Another great job by the commission. Public hearings, there are none. Plan commission reports, there are none. Residents' comments, this is on agenda items only. Are there any residents' comments on agenda items only? Hearing done. President's report, I have a few appointments tonight, I'm gonna do a grouping of them, and then I'm gonna do the new adjudication officer as well separately. So, I will need a motion to concur when I'm done reading the following appointments. Appointments to the Advisory Commission on Aging, Marilyn Snyder, who is here, former village clerk, great example again of Morton Grove, was a village clerk, her husband, Donny, was the longest sitting trustee in town. I believe that's a fact, and here she is in her retirement years, and look, she's still serving the village. So Marilyn, we're grateful for you to be here. Josephine Mian, I can't wait. Josephine Mian's here as well, I see. Just give a princess wave, Jo. Hope Hornstein is not here, but always welcome. And then I have two reappointments to the Environment and Natural Resource Commission, Christine Corelli, three-year term, which will end August 1st, 2024, and Andrew Hoffman, a three-year term, ending August 1st, 2024. If I could get a motion to concur?
Motion to concur. Second.
Motion's been made by Trustee Minks, seconded by Trustee Travis. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, I do have an appointment of our adjudication hearing officer, Daniel Didik. I would need a motion to concur on that one as well.
I'll make the motion to concur.
I'll second that.
Motion's made by Trustee Minks, seconded by Trustee Greer. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service to the village. I hope you enjoy it as much as we do, and it takes a team, and it takes a village, and that's exactly what you volunteering means, so. I do have two proclamations tonight, I'll try to get through these. Actually, one is very timely, especially with the hurricane that came through Louisiana and in that area. This is the National Preparedness Month proclamation, which is recognized each September to promote family and community disaster and emergency planning now and throughout the year. And whereas promoting emergency preparedness in our families, workplaces, and communities can help minimize both physical and economic damage throughout the village of Morton Grove should a disaster occur. And whereas the 2021 Campaign for National Preparedness Month is entitled Prepare to Protect, preparing for disasters is protecting everyone you love. And whereas each week in September, the campaign will focus on a different aspect of preparedness. During Week 1, September 1st to the 4th, which has passed, the focus is to make a plan, talk with friends and family about how to communicate before, during, and after a disaster. During Week 2, September 5th through the 11th, the focus is build a kit to encourage families to gather supplies to last for several days after a disaster for everyone living in your home, and to consider the unique needs of each person or pet. During Week 3, this week, the focus is low-cost, no-cost preparedness. To limit the impacts of disasters, understand the risk of disasters in our area. Check your insurance coverage, and learn how to make your home stronger in the face of storms and other common hazards. During Week 4, next week, September 19th to the 25th, the focus is teach youth about preparedness, to talk to children about preparing for emergencies, and what to do in case they are separated from their parents. Whereas, all residents of the village of Morton Grove are encouraged to participate in preparedness activities and to review the ready.gov website, that's ready.gov, website for more preparedness resources for families. Now therefore, I, Daniel P. D. Maria, Mayor of the village of Morton Grove, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as National Preparedness Month, and encourage all village employees, officials, and residents to do everything possible to make preparedness a priority, and work together as a team to ensure the village is prepared for disasters and emergency of any type. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and seal, and cause to be affixed the seal of Morton Grove Village and Morton Grove President, Daniel P. D. Maria. I just wanna, you know, this is a real thing, I know you, we see it on the news, but I was actually with a young family yesterday that was here from Louisiana, their, home, I think it was, it was the actual town where it hit the worst. They were up here, they're displaced, they are now living with the wife's mother in Lombard, and the Lombard School took them in, and they're now gonna stay probably for a few months, because as we think we have it rough here, there's still no electricity, they're not gonna be able to go back for at least five to six weeks, and they're displaced. So, it is very important that we all keep in mind that we should be prepared. You know, you always think it's not gonna happen to you until it happens to you, and then it's too late. That's the purpose of that proclamation, so I just wanted to kinda share a real-world story. Next up, I have another proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas, the Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas, September 17th, 2021, marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the United States Constitution by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this outstanding document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Daniel P. D. Maria, Mayor of the village of Morton Grove, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week. And I ask all residents of the village to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, by attentively protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and seal, and cause to be affixed the seal of the great village of Morton Grove, Daniel P. D. Maria, Village President. Other than that, I do have a couple of quick notes, and then I will move forward. One, our continued plea, please get vaccinated. As a reminder, all visitors to the village buildings are required to wear a face covering indoors. As I said, please get vaccinated, the decision is completely yours, and I, as the village president, respect anybody's decision, one way or the other. Just be courteous to your neighbors, so that we don't keep this thing alive for years to come. Morton Grove French Market, just a reminder, it's held every Saturday until October 30th, so there's what, another month and a half to go? 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, with the exception of the September 4th. I don't know, this is an old notes thing I wrote here, the parking lot, and blah, blah. At this family-friendly outdoor market, a variety of local vendors offer fresh produce, food items, and other goods. Vendors and offerings change throughout the season, so if you went one week, and you go a couple weeks later, it might not be exactly the same. And I think the later part of the market now is probably the best time to go. We had a great, successful Morton Grove Labor Days. I would like to thank everybody that volunteered, everybody that attended. I would like to give a shout-out to our two park commissioners, Keith White and Paul Minksoar in our audience tonight, as well as Mr. Minksoar's wife, Rita Minksoar, one of our trustees, and I want to give a special shout-out to my friend, Bill Greer. All the people I just mentioned, not just them, but everybody was there. It didn't just come together, but I wanted to mention those people that I just did, because they were there every day for 12 hours, for four or five days straight, and planning and meeting for the last two months. So I want a round of applause, because it was a great community event. We had a nice, it's not the right word to use, it was a nice event, September 11th, for the 20th anniversary commemoration. Our fire and police honor guards did an outstanding job, and gave reverent recognition to the solemn event. I mean, it is hard to believe it's been 20 years since there was so much sacrifice and change along the way, but again, that was when firefighters, police people, first responders, really, that's when that became the buzzword, right? The dedication to those, from them, to people that were directly in harm's way. It really, just, when you see everybody, and you go back to that 20 years, you realize that even today, things like that can happen, and there are people that step up and go into the danger, and they don't run from the danger. And that's called leadership, and that's called heroes, and they're all heroes. Again, tremendous bravery and significant sadness, obviously, we're never gonna be the same, and in some ways, we are stronger through our resilience as a nation and a community, and we must forever remember the sacrifices made by all that responded to the call of duty that day. We did have the 2021 Morton Grove Sustainability Expo, that was this past Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:30, we had our first one. I was at the American Legion, the event featured exhibits from local businesses and community organizers, organizations providing eco-friendly services and opportunities for Morton Grove residents and businesses. The event was well-attended and well-received by the community, so, again, kudos to everybody that worked on our Sustainability Expo, great job. Some upcoming events, real quickly, we are gonna have our first Morton Grove Pumpkin Smash. Save the date, Saturday, November 6th, we will have our first Pumpkin Smash, which will be held at the north end of Horror Park. If anybody's wondering what that is, a Pumpkin Smash, it's an effort by communities to divert pumpkins from landfills by providing locations for residents to drop off jack-o'-lanterns to be composted. We will have more details as we get a little closer, but just wanted to throw that into everybody's mind. Now here's one that is somewhat important, very important, and I get a lot of calls on every year, and that is, the 2021-2022 vehicle stickers must be displayed as of September 1st. If you don't have it, or your vehicle sticker isn't being displayed, please correct it, before it gets escalated out of control. But other than that, I have no further business tonight. I do have a res- I do have a resolution 21-59, authorizing the installation of temporary street signs in the 7,000 block of Church Street in Morton Grove, Illinois, to honor Kristina Curtis. I would need a motion to approve Resolution 21-59. The little background, Christina Curtis lived on the 7,000 block of Church Street for over 20 years. She was a student in Heinz Elementary School and Gulf Junior Middle School, where she made many friends, excelled in her coursework, and was the valedictorian of her class. She attended Niles North High School and was awarded a scholarship to Marquette University in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Christina started dancing when she was five years old, and was a teacher, working with beginning student dancers, before she passed away at the young age of 23. Christina Curtis personified the values of Morton Grove community, and will always be remembered by her students, teachers, neighbors, friends, and most importantly, her family, as a warm, bright, friendly person who found time for everyone she met. So, we just thought, and as do the family and the neighbors, it would be an honor to have a temporary street sign in the 7,000 block of Church Street. That's a little background on that. I do need a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the Resolution 21-59.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Greer, seconded by Trustee Whitco. Any discussion, questions, further clarification? I would just ask Ralph, if you would explain to the public what this, what this is, how the program runs?
Sure, I can summarize that. What we have is a relatively new program in the village, for individuals to be recognized that have been in the village, served the village, or have some outstanding application in the village, and someone could make application, bring that forward to the village. They would need then to fill out our application, which is online, and then they need to have 65% of their block, or the area that needs to be covered, typically it's a block, say that it's correct. So it's really a localized situation, and sometimes you get emotional, but, you know, the whole community doesn't feel the same way. So before it becomes before this board, we want to make sure that the community accepts it. Then, the individual that makes the application, or the group, would pay for the sign, and the sign is then mounted at a location, or two locations, depending on the logistics for that area, and then after a year, that sign would then go to the person that nominated the sign, and they would have it for keeping. Also, the village board can put up signs and make it for a longer period of time, but those are usually very unique situations, so that we're not commemorating every street in the community. The street's name remains the street's name officially, what is just a commemorative honorary name for the street.
Thank you for explaining it, Dan. Thank you very much. Any others? Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Resolution 21-59 passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Are any Christina's friends or family here? So, we hope this is a good recognition, and we appreciate you letting us know about it, because we're happy to do it, and again, it'd be, would be, we'd be remiss if we didn't do it, so, hope you guys think about it, and then people drive by, they can see her name and remember who she was, and her positivity. I love positivity.
Mayor, let me just add one more thing. Once the sign is developed, now that it's been recognized by the village board, we'll make sure we communicate with the area and the nominee, to understand when that would be unveiled, at a date and time that they would prefer, so they can invite people to enjoy it. It just doesn't pop up on the street.
Does that sound good? They'll let you know when we're gonna install it? I torture Ralph.
It's not torture, it's just the first time through the process, and we-
No, 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 no.
It's done okay.
And then Ralph will let me know, and I hope I can be a guest, if you'd be so kind, I'd like to show up, so. I'll see you there. Thank you for coming, and thanks for bringing it up to us. I'm sorry for your loss. That's all I have tonight. Clerk's report?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Staff report, village administrator?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I do have one notice, and that would conclude my report, and a reminder, actually, a reminder and a notice to the public of the public hearing for the proposed Lincoln Lehigh Redevelopment Project area, to be held September 27th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, here in Council Chambers, at the Richard T. Flickinger Municipal Center, Council Chamber 6101, Capulina, Morton Grove, Illinois. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Corporation Council. Thank you. Reports by trustees, Trustee Greer?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you very much. I do have a first read on ordinance 21-07. This ordinance is approving a final plot of subdivision and accepting certain improvements for the Beckwith Crossing subdivision at 6729 and 6733 Beckwith Road, which is obviously in Morton Grove. A little background on this property was commonly known, which again, is at 6729 and 6733 Beckwith Road, located on the south side of Beckwith, between Oak Park and Lehigh Avenue. It has a combined land area of 1.71 acres, and is located within the R1 Single Family Residence District, and is currently improved with one single-family residence and stormwater management facilities. Back in July 22nd of 2019, this board passed an ordinance 19-10 pursuant to the subdivision application submitted by Zubar Patel, which is the developer, under the case PC 1903, which is approved, which approved a preliminary plot of subdivision for the property to create five new lots of record. Pursuant to Section 12-8-3, the developer submitted a final plot of subdivision, prepared by Heritage Land Consultants LLC dated back July 30th of 2019, pursuant to the Section And the building commissioner, the plan commission chairperson, the village administrator, and our Corporation Council reviewed this final plot of subdivision, and unanimously found that the proposed final plot of subdivision is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plot of this subdivision, and recommend a final plot to be approved by our board, which I said is a first read- our board, which I said is a first read so there will be no action taken. So I thank you for that, and I have no other report.
Thank you, Trustee Greer. Trustee Khan?
I have no comments.
Thank you. Trustee Minks?
No report.
Thank you. Trustee Thill?
No report.
Thank you. Trustee Travis?
Yes, just one piece of community relations commissions and business. The 11th Morton Grove Community Artist Performance will take place on Saturday, October 30, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. For this fall's performance, the focus will be on high school performers. There's an open call for submissions from high school students through September 24 at noon. Submissions can be sent to www.id entityperformingarts.org/projects-aspx. That is the end of my report. Thank you.
You are welcome. Trustee Whitco, you have a few resolutions for us tonight?
I do. I'll try to read quickly. The first is Resolution 21-55, authorizing a task order with Siorba Group for Albert Davis Water Main Improvement Project. This will authorize the village administrator to execute a task order for Siorba Group to complete design engineering for Albert Davis Water Main Improvements Project. The Public Works Department is prioritizing replacement of its water main crossing under North Branch Chicago River in order to reduce vulnerability of the distribution system to supply water to its customers on the east side of the village. A segment of the water main within the forest preserve near Albert Avenue and Davis Street is a high priority for replacement. The engineering needs exceed the expertise and capacity of Engineering Division staff. Resolution 18-08, approved on January 22, 2018, authorized staff to negotiate a task order contract with Siorba Group for professional engineering services. Village staff negotiated the scope of work with Siorba Group to provide preliminary and design engineering services for this project. The fiscal impact is $61,969, and I move that we approve Resolution 21-55.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Whitco, seconded by Trustee Minks. Any discussion, questions, clarification?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may.
Trustee Thill?
I noticed on the map that we were all given that the village is considering open trenching on the west end of this, of the forest preserves. My question, I hope, will be that we will consider vertical boring rather than open trenching, because we've been working there now for 17 years doing restoration, and that's the same area where right now, we're trying to recover from the last time we had a water break. And I realize that it's probably more costly for vertical boring, but sometimes you have to think about nature. So if, when we do talk to the engineers, if we would kind of lay that on the line and ask them if that's something that we could take care of, vertical boring as to open trenching. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Thill?
I know this is necessary. Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Resolution 21-55 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Resolution 21-56, authorization for the execution of contract with the Illinois Department of Transportation, or IDOT, for maintenance of traffic signals. IDOT and the village have a mutual interest in and the maintenance and apportionment of shared energy costs for traffic signals along state highways within Morton Grove. A 10-year intergovernmental agreement between IDOT and the village specifying these maintenance and financial responsibilities expired on June 30, 2021. IDOT submitted a new 10-year agreement for execution. The village pays a quarterly invoice to IDOT for IDOT to maintain certain traffic signals and for energy costs. The village to maintain traffic signals within the village on the following state highways is Gulf Road, Dempster Street, Oakden Street, and Waukegan. The estimated share of the village's 2022 annual maintenance and energy cost is $25,000 and will be modified periodically based upon IDOT's procurement policy for traffic signal maintenance and energy supply. I move that we approve Resolution 21-56.
I'll second that. Motion's made by Trustee Whitco, seconded by Trustee Greer. Any discussion, questions, clarification?
Yes, I have a question or two.
Trustee Thill?
$25,000, is that per year, per contract?
That's annual.
Okay. My second statement is regarding Resolution 21-56. Attachment A, Section H, the second paragraph, the state is purchasing the equipment that is needed, the state is installing the product that is needed, but then again, the city is being responsible for any litigation on it. That doesn't make sense to me. If the state buys and the state installs, the state should be the one that has to defend it. Is that a legal question?
Corporate constantly thoughts on that?
Those are their rules.
Excuse me? That's their rules.
We don't have any choice over them.
Yeah. If we're going to be in this program, that's the way it works.
Welcome to Illinois.
It's not, it's not, it's not something you have the ability to-
Yeah, we can't amend that. We can take it to Springfield, but we're going to have problems with our traffic signals.
As much as I don't like the answer, I'll accept it.
Do you have any other question?
No, I'm finished, I'm sorry.
Anybody else? Clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Thill?
Has it been, aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Resolution 21-56 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Resolution 21-57, formalizing the village's endorsement for the project development of a pedestrian facility along Oakden Street. The purpose is to express project support and authorize submittal of a construction funding application for a pedestrian facility along Oakden Street. Village staff is developing an improvement to provide a pedestrian facility along Oakden Street within the villages of Morton Grove, Niles, and Skokie. These villages are also trying to assemble funding sources for the engineering and construction expenses. The project cost is estimated to be more than $4 million. The Illinois Safe Routes to School is a funding program that can provide up to $250,000 for construction costs and is accepting applications until September 30, 2021. The application process requires a resolution to authorize the financial support of the sponsoring agency. I move that we approve Resolution 21-57.
Second.
Motion's made by Trustee Whitco, seconded by Trustee Travis. Any discussion, questions, clarification?
Question, if I may?
Yes, Trustee Thill?
I can see it's a $4 million project, we were hoping to get a quarter of a million dollars. I had asked Chris if he could let us know as of right now, what other fundings are available to us. If he could answer that.
Could, there's quite a bit to be done.
No, he pulled it up before the meeting. See, I want the public to know what's going on.
So we've assembled some funding from county and federal sources in the amount of $3 million from the Fed and about $350,000 from the county in support of this project, which is estimated at just less than $4 million. So we're asking for an additional 250 from, it's another federal source.
Is this money we've already gotten, or has it been promised?
It's been promised. So it's been awarded, it needs to be obligated. There will be agreements coming through for the, for the other federal funding in future meetings.
As of right now, it looks good.
Excuse me?
As of right now, it looks good.
It looks very good. You're getting a, almost $4 million project for, you know, shared costs with Skokie, shared costs with Niles. We should be into it for about $200,000.
Thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chris. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Thill?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Resolution 21-57 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and lastly, Resolution 21-58, authorizing the purchase of one new international dump truck with spreader and snowplow from Rush Truck Centers of Springfield, Illinois. Public Works routinely reviews vehicles and equipment for fuel economy, safety, dependability, age, and excessive repair cost, and has recommended the village replaces its 1998 Dump Truck 36. The purchase of a new international dump truck with salt, spreader, and plow for the Public Works Department was competitively bid through two separate procurement agencies. Rush Truck Center of Springfield, Illinois was selected as a low bid vendor in the amount of $192,644,000. Funding for this purchase is available in the 2021 Enterprise Fund in the amount of $210,000, and I move that we approve Resolution 21-58.
I'll second that. Motion made by Trustee Whitco, seconded by Trustee Greer. Any discussion, questions?
I got a lot of time on my hands this week. My question is, is there any trade-in value on the truck we are replacing?
It should be in the report. If there's no trade-in value, we will take it up for auction.
Okay, thank you very much. End of my questions.
Any other questions? Clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Thill?
Aye.
Resolution 21-58 passes 6 to 0, Your Honor.
I just wanted to add a note to Resolution 21-58 for the residents that are here and the residents, the few that do watch Channel 6. This was a 19, I want to make sure you heard it right. This is a 1998 truck that we are still using to this day because Public Works routinely, obviously, maintains our vehicles, but nobody, and I'll challenge any municipality or in the Chicagoland area, maybe in the nation, keeps things more in line and efficient than this village does. 20% forest preserve, and we have a truck from 1998. So I just want to make people well-aware of what we do. We don't willy-nilly spend money, and it's not just, okay, yes, Mayor, we're going to buy a new truck. I mean, come on, it's 1998. Should have bought one five years ago, but we didn't. So anyway, just proving a point. Thank you very much.
I tried to give the correct inflection to that as I was reading it.
You did good.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
I did want to tag on to some comments that the mayor made about our first, hopefully, annual Sustainability Expo. It was wildly successful. There was a steady stream of people at every exhibitor. I want to thank all of the exhibitors that came. They did a wonderful job of teaching residents unique and effective ways to go green. I especially want to thank the commissioners of the Environment and Natural Resources Commission because they had the vision, they put in months of work, and especially staff liaison, Terry Liston, who did a lot of work as well. So thank you to everybody that was there, and thank you to everybody that attended.
Thank you.
End of my report.
Good point, Trustee Whitco.
Thanks for that, but could I also shout out to Public Works? They really did the yeoman's, I don't mind getting the credit, but I really think it belongs to Public Works, and of course Ralph.
Takes the team. Any other business brought before the board tonight? None? Presentation of warrants, Trustee Minks?
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
The warrants are going to present, be presented tonight in two amounts. The first amount, $887,262.58, is from August 23, 2021, so I move that we approve the first set of warrants as presented.
Motion's made by Trustee Minks, seconded by Trustee Thill.